... here on Monday, April 15, 2013, at City Hall at 100 State Street. It's time for our regularly scheduled City Council meeting. Item number one.
Roll call shows all councilors present except for Lupke and Kincaid.
Thank you. Now, item number two is Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three, special orders of the day and announcements. We have several. Number 3A.
The recognition of the Fair Housing Poster Contest Award winners.
Ms. Down.
With April being Fair Housing Month, the children of the Merrill Community Center participated in a Fair Housing Poster Contest with the theme of "Fair Housing: The Bridge That Connects." The posters have been displayed here at City Hall outside the Forum and will remain on display through April 30. During the first two weeks of April, the public was able to vote for their favorite posters. Rick Valdez, the Chair of the Equal Opportunities and Human Relations Commission, will present the first and second place awards to our winners tonight. The second place winner is a second grader from Merrill Elementary School, Na'Shaun Moore. The first place winner is a second grader from Todd Elementary School, Olivia Burakowski. The poster contest provides a unique opportunity to bring awareness to the issue of discrimination in housing, and there is more information about fair housing available near the posters outside the Forum. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Item 3B.
3B is a proclamation recognizing the Retired and Senior Volunteer Program (RSVP) 40th anniversary.
Mr. Vice President.
Whereas the Retired and Senior Volunteer Program (RSVP) mission is to enrich the lives of volunteers age 55 and older through meaningful service opportunities that match their life skills and interests to community needs, and whereas RSVP is celebrating its 40th anniversary in 2013, and whereas there are currently more than 800 active RSVP volunteers ranging in age from 55 years old to 102 years old, with the mean age being 75, and whereas since the inception of the program in 1973, volunteers have performed 4,615,107 hours of service to the community, and whereas RSVP partners with over 150 organizations in Rock County, and whereas RSVP in-home volunteers produce nearly 2,000 handmade items each year, including mittens, scarves, hats, sweaters, lap robes, and baby blankets, which are distributed within the Rock County community, and whereas the intergenerational program serves over 1,000 children each year, and whereas the Senior Volunteering for Seniors program serves over 300 people each year, and the volunteers have traveled over 95,000 miles since the program began in late 2010, now therefore be it proclaimed that the City Council of the City of Beloit recognizes the 40th anniversary of the RSVP program in Rock County and honors the staff and volunteers who contribute to the success of RSVP and their partner organizations by donating their time and talent to the community. The City Council further encourages seniors to volunteer for RSVP and community organizations to recognize the importance and value of these talented volunteers, presented this 15th day of April 2013.
I'm glad I didn't have to submit any artwork. I wouldn't do it anywhere near as good as they did. On behalf of the Board of Directors, the staff, and our beloved volunteers, both past, present, and future, thank you for recognizing our longevity and the great work that our volunteers do in the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Item 3C.
A proclamation supporting the YWCA's Stand Against Racism.
Whereas racism and discrimination hurt everyone and have a profoundly negative effect on children, adults, communities, and institutions, and whereas racism can take many different forms, including discrimination, personal attacks, violence, written or verbal threats or insults, damage to property, graffiti, or inequity of treatment to individuals based on race, color, creed, or ethnicity, and whereas census figures show 36 percent of individuals in the City of Beloit identify themselves as a minority, and whereas the City of Beloit recognizes that all people should be treated with dignity, respect, and justice, and whereas Stand Against Racism Day is a nationally recognized initiative with the purpose of encouraging communities to come together to raise awareness that racism still exists while offering to be part of the solution to end racism and other forms of discrimination, and whereas the City of Beloit supports the mission of the YWCA of Rock County to eliminate racism in our community, state, and nation, now therefore I, Charles M. Haynes, President of the Beloit City Council, do hereby proclaim April 26, 2013, as Stand Against Racism Day in the City of Beloit, and that the City Council calls upon all Beloit citizens to support celebrating diversity and promoting racial justice in the Beloit community, presented this 15th day of April 2013.
Thank you very much. On behalf of our clients, staff, and volunteers, we thank you for your proclamation, and of course, the YWCA believes that every day we should stand against racism, but this is an important way to show it. Jade McCauley, our racial justice coordinator, is also with me here tonight, and she has some events that are coming up that I believe you have some literature on.
Thank you for allowing us to come, and we do have a workshop on May 17. If anyone is interested, the information, I believe, is on your desk. It is a workshop that's taking place in Janesville. We're also having a Race Against Racism in June, June 22, and it is a Rock County event where we hope to raise funds to proceed with our programming and work. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Item 3D.
A proclamation recognizing National Library Week, April 14 through 20, 2013.
Whereas libraries are the heart of their communities, and librarians work to bring the changing needs of their communities, including providing resources for everyone and bringing services outside of library walls, and whereas libraries and librarians bring together community members to enrich and shape the community, and whereas librarians are trained professionals, providing technology resources and access to downloadable content like eBooks, and whereas libraries offer resources and services that stimulate lifelong personal enrichment, enjoyment, reading, and learning, and whereas libraries continuously grow and evolve in how they provide for the needs of every member of their communities, and whereas libraries, librarians, library workers, and supporters across America are celebrating National Library Week with the theme "Communities Matter at Your Library", now therefore I, Charles M. Haynes, President of the Beloit City Council, do hereby proclaim the week of April 14 through April 20, 2013, as National Library Week in the City of Beloit, and encourage all residents to visit the Beloit Public Library to take advantage of the wonderful resources available at your library because communities matter at your library, presented this 15th day of April 2013.
And I would like to thank the City Council for recognizing the Beloit Public Library during National Library Week. I thank you on behalf of our staff and our Library Board of Trustees. Thank you.
And item 3E.
A proclamation declaring April 26, 2013, as Arbor Day.
Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees, and whereas this holiday, called Arbor Day, was first observed with the planting of trees in Nebraska, and whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees are a renewable resource giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products, and whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community, and whereas Beloit has been recognized as a Tree City USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation and desires to continue its tree-planting ways, now therefore I, Charles M. Haynes, President of the Beloit City Council, do hereby proclaim April 26, 2013, as Arbor Day in the City of Beloit, and urge all citizens to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands and to support our city's urban forestry program, and be it further proclaimed that all Beloit citizens are encouraged to plant trees to brighten the community and promote the well-being of present and future generations, dated this 15th day of April 2013.
Move on to item four, public hearings. Item 4A.
A proposed ordinance amending the zoning district map of the City of Beloit to change the zoning district classification of the properties located at 1035 and 1041 Udell Drive from temporary R1A Single Family Residential District to permanent R1A Single Family Residential District. The Plan Commission recommended approval, six to zero.
Ms. Christiansen.
On July 22, 2013, the City Council adopted an ordinance annexing 1035 and 1041 Udell Drive into the City of Beloit and assigned a temporary zoning classification of R1A Single Family Residential District to both of the properties. Once it's annexed, the Plan Commission must initiate a zoning map amendment to assign a permanent zoning classification. Plan Commission did initiate a zoning map amendment to assign a permanent zoning classification of R1A Single Family Residential District, and they reviewed it at April 3 and voted unanimously to recommend approval of that rezoning.
Thank you. I'd like to open the public hearing on item 4A. Does anybody wish to come forward and speak on item 4A? Second call for persons to come forward and speak on item 4A. Third and final call for someone to come forward and speak on item 4A. Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on item 4A. Do we have a...
Move that we suspend the rules and proceed to action on the merits, Mr. President.
Second. Moved by Vanda Bogart, second by Levy. Does anybody have any questions on suspending the rules? All in favor of suspending the rules, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes five to zero. Do we have a motion on the merits?
Mr. President, I'll move on the merits.
Second. Moved by DeForest, second by Levy. Does anybody... Councilor Vanda Bogart, do you wish to...
No, that was the button from the first one.
Ah, okay. All right. Okay. Anybody else have any questions or comments? All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes five to zero. Item 4B.
A proposed ordinance amending the zoning district map of the City of Beloit to change the zoning district classification of the properties located at 545 and 549 West Grand Avenue, 615, 619, 622, and 629 8th Street, and 548 Locust Street, from C2 Neighborhood Commercial District and R1B Single Family Residential District to PLI Public Lands and Institution District. The Plan Commission recommended approval, six to zero.
Ms. Christiansen.
This request is related to the proposed expansion of Hackett Elementary School. On March 4, 2013, you did adopt an ordinance amending the future land use plan of the city's comprehensive plan to recommend institutional and community services and a zoning classification of PLI for these properties. There are photographs of each of the properties within the agenda packet. They are mostly houses, except the former pharmacy building on the corner of 8th and Grand, and if you've been by there recently, you will see that the school district is actually already demolishing some of those houses. But the ultimate plan was to expand school onto these properties, either with part of the building or the parking lot. We are currently in the process of actually reviewing the site plans and the architectural review. We did send a notice out to the owners of nearby properties. We had been contacted by one neighbor who did support the rezoning. Plan Commission reviewed this on April 3 and voted unanimously to recommend approval of this zoning map amendment.
Thank you. I'll open the hearing on item 4B. Does anyone wish to come forward and speak on item 4B? Second call for someone to come forward and speak on item 4B. Third and final call for someone to come forward and speak on item 4B. Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on item 4B. Do we have a motion to suspend the rules?
So moved.
Moved by Levy.
Second.
Second by Spritezer. Any questions or comments on suspending the rules? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All in favor of suspending the rules, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We suspended the rules by a vote of five to zero. Do we have a motion?
Move approval on the merits.
Second.
Moved by Vanda Bogart, second by Levy. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call the matter. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes five to zero. Item 4C.
A proposed ordinance amending the City of Beloit Comprehensive Plan for the properties located at 528 and 532 Forest Avenue, and 15... excuse me, 1528 and 1532 Forest Avenue, and 1533 West Grand Avenue. The Plan Commission recommended approval, five to zero.
Ms. Christiansen.
This comprehensive plan amendment is related to the expansion of Gaston Elementary School. These are three houses that the school district either has already purchased or are in the process of purchasing. Right now, they're shown as what their existing uses are, what they're intending to do is expand the school, so the proposal is to change it to institutional and community services, and then ultimately, I think we did include a site plan in there, ultimately that those three properties would end up being open space, at least on the current site plan. That's what we're seeing. Plan Commission did hold a public hearing to consider the amendments, and they unanimously adopted a resolution recommending approval of that amendment to the comprehensive plan.
Thank you. I'll open the public hearing on item 4C. Does anyone wish to come forward and speak on item 4C? Second call for persons to come forward and speak on item 4C. Third and final call for persons to come forward and speak on item 4C. Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on item 4C. Do we have a motion to suspend the rules?
Move to suspend the rules.
Moved by Spritezer.
No, second.
Second by DeForest. Any questions or comments on suspending the rules? Hearing none, I'll call the matter. All in favor of suspending the rules, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We've suspended the rules by a vote of five to zero. Do we have a motion on the merits?
I have a motion.
Moved by DeForest.
Second.
Second by Spritezer. Any questions or comments on the merits? Hearing none, I'll call the matter. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We pass the matter five to zero. Item 4D.
A proposed ordinance amending the zoning district map of the City of Beloit to change the zoning district classification of the property located at 501 Prospect Street from PLI Public Lands and Institutions District to CBD1 Central Business District Core. The Plan Commission recommended approval, six to zero.
Ms. Christiansen.
You may recall that we amended the comprehensive plan not that long ago, the future land use map, on March 4 to change the future land use of the property from institutional and community services to neighborhood commercial on the downtown future land use map. This is the zoning step, and they have applied for the Central Business District Core zoning designation. Because this property is located within the College Park Historic District, the Land Ricks Commission was notified of the proposed rezoning and given an opportunity to give a statement on it. That statement of support is included in your packet. The letter was actually written to the Plan Commission, and it was presented to them. The nearby property owners were notified. A representative from Scoville Hall did come to the meeting and expressed some concern about sharing the on-street parking, and there was a discussion at Plan Commission about the parking. The representative from Scoville did come in in the last week and indicated that he had met with John Whitnabel, and he felt they could work out the parking issues between the two of them, and we've also had also heard from the church saying that they had... the council had voted to support this project, because I know they had come at your last meeting. Plan Commission did review this on April 3 and did vote unanimously to recommend approval of the rezoning to CBD.
Thank you. I'd like to open the public hearing on item 4D. Anyone wishing to come forward and speak on item 4D, please approach the podium and state your name and address.
Rick McGrath, 1747 Sherwood Drive here in Beloit, and I just wanted to, on behalf of the Land Ricks Commission, just reiterate the fact that we did vote unanimously in approval of this to the extent that the Whitnables, that the castle is successful, look forward to the amenities, quality of life, the programming that they will add to our community that we share together. One of the things that many older communities like Beloit have to deal with is their bobs, big old buildings, and we have several exemplary examples of how Beloit has been able to make productive use of their bobs, and I see this as one more positive example. And as those of us who live adjacent to the project, when we are down at Farmer's Market or when we are attending the... going to the restaurants downtown, it's not uncommon for the kids to want to duck out and walk home, or bike home, or rollerblade home, and that's where they go. They go past the castle, and we have no qualms about any fears about the programming that they will be putting there. Thank you.
Any other persons wishing to come forward and speak on item 4D? Second call for persons to come forward and speak on item 4D. Third and final call for persons to come forward and speak on item 4D. Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on item 4D. Do we have a motion to suspend the rules?
Move to suspend the rules.
Let's check it.
Moved by Spritezer, second by Levy. Do we have any questions on suspending the rules? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All in favor of suspending the rules, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We've suspended the rules by an item of five to zero. Do we have a motion on the merits?
I'd like to.
Moved by Levy, second by... or moved by Stifor, second by Levy. Any questions?
I'd like to make a comment if I could.
Sure, go right ahead.
I think that the... not delay, but the methodology used here has been shown to be effective. I understand there was dissension and disagreement about what to do with this property, but there's been, it sounds like, from what we hear from Ms. Christiansen and others, there's been a coming together of recognition that if this project were not successful, there would be, at best or worst, a hole in the ground or an abandoned building, and this project is obviously superior by far to those other alternatives, and I think people were able to put aside some of their concerns or fears or disagreements and recognize that, and I think that they deserve a commendation for having made those... making that progress.
Thank you. Councilor DeForest.
Thank you. I also would like to make a comment along those lines, as my colleague, Councilor Vanda Bogart. I was excited to see stakeholders involved in the process. I think that always makes a difference, that they have the opportunity to raise their concerns and fears, and I appreciate the above and beyond efforts that you took. Thank you very much for addressing those concerns, meeting with them, and finding out ways to work together on this. That way, everyone feels good about moving forward, so I want to recognize your efforts to really involve people, and I'm grateful that we did have the delays here so that we could have that dialogue, so I feel real good about the project going forward. Thank you.
Okay. I'll put my two cents worth. Anytime that I see a person go forward and work to save a structure, bring a service into the community, putting forth their own blood, sweat, and tears, and pouring out of their resources, I think that that deserves as much support as we can give, and this is certainly a worthwhile project. Thank you very much for your efforts. So, that's as much as I have to say on it. So, I think we've suspended the rules, and we have a motion and a second. Hearing no other comments, I think I'll call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes five to zero. Now on to item 4E.
A proposed resolution authorizing a conditional use permit to allow a community service use in the CBD1 Central Business District Core for the property located at 501 Prospect Street. The Plan Commission recommended approval, six to zero.
You're getting an amazing amount of exercise today. Please proceed.
Mr. Whitnabel intends to repurpose this historic building to include a performing arts center and event hosting as a principal use, but he also desires to operate the Youth Unite organization on the lower level, the basement of the structure. Youth Unite was formed in 2008 to combat school bullying. They tried to do this by involving school-aged children in the performing arts, music, and other educational programs, and they're looking for a permanent location for Youth Unite. So, that's what the conditional... I mean, it's for community service uses, which is their Youth Unite group. They did, at Plan Commission, discuss. There was some concerns raised about having the Youth Unite with potential sale of liquor with the special events. They did indicate that they would be physically separated because they'd be on different levels, and they would also be occurring at different times. We did send notices out to the property owners and received no comments. Plan Commission reviewed it on April 3 and recommended unanimously to approve, subject to the three conditions which are listed in your resolution, which is that the conditional use permit authorizes Youth Unite organization to operate in the basement of the existing building at 501 Prospect, that alcohol may not be sold on the premises while children are attending the Youth Unite events or programming, and then just our standard condition about major changes coming back through this process by amending the conditional use permit, and that staff may approve minor changes administratively.
Thank you. I'd like to open the public hearing on item 4E. All persons wishing to come forward and speak on item 4A, please approach the podium. Second call for persons to come forward and speak on item 4E. Third and final call for persons to come forward and speak on item 4E. Seeing and hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on item 4E. Do we have a motion to approve? Moved by DeForest.
Second.
Second by Spritezer. And Councilor DeForest.
Thank you. I am glad to see the condition included that stipulates that alcohol may not be sold on the premises while children are attending the Youth Unite events or programming, and I did have a question. I don't know if, Mr. President, if I might be able to address this to the Whitnables, because there... it's specified that alcohol will be sold on the third floor, and I know some of the larger community events might have kids at them, and maybe this is a question better saved for when the liquor license... were approached for liquor license, but I guess I'm wondering if liquor will be able to be consumed throughout the building. I understand it's being sold on the third floor, but will also be consumed... will the consumption remain on the third floor of that building?
I can answer that, I think. Their liquor license will include the area that's designated for possession, consumption, sale, and if you designate that as only the third floor, then that's the only place that will be actual licensed premise.
I'm going to address that at the time of liquor license. All right. Thank you.
Councilor Spritezer.
I just wanted to comment that I'm familiar with the layout of the inside of the building, and there's definitely significant separation between the third-floor balcony area and the rest of the building, so I think that when we do get to those discussions, it'll be fairly easy to indicate where things would or wouldn't be because it's a pretty separate area.
Thank you. Have any other council questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call the matter. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes five to zero. And move on to citizens' participation. We've reached the point of an agenda where persons can come forward and speak to the council about items that may come before us in the future. We may not address anything that you bring up to us, but may direct you to staff for... We may not address anything that you bring up to us, but may direct you to staff for assistance, and we ask you to refrain from any personal attacks and keep your comments to under three minutes. I have one person who's given me a sheet, Mr. Rick Barter. Please come forward and state your name and address.
My name is Rick Barter, 2560 Barney Stone Drive in Beloit. I am an avid bicyclist and represent many others in the Beloit community who have a passion for the sport. Speaking to you today to support the resolution, item 11A on your agenda coming up, that is in front of the council, on applying for a DNR stewardship grant for a path through Big Hill Park, as well as a bridge across Goose Creek just north of Big Hill. As a follow-up to the, when I first heard about the project that Beth Jacobson, the assistant to the city manager, and the Leadership Development Academy had undertaken to raise dollars for the bridge over Goose Creek, it was very encouraging to see leadership in action. As a follow-up to the project to raise money for a bridge across Goose Creek, myself and Jeff Johnson, another avid cyclist, met with city manager Arv to try to include in the request a path through Big Hill Park, which is an underutilized park in many, minds of many people. And so that is included in the resolution. So we'd like to thank the senior manager for including that as part of the grant request to the DNR. There is no guarantee you're going to get the grant request. It's a 50-50 grant. The DNR comes up with half the money, and then private or public money is used to fund the balance of the request. Many of us who bicycle do not necessarily need bike paths because we are used to being on narrow and windy roads, but there is a, there are many people, recreational cyclists that, as well as walkers, who would enjoy a path across a bridge and a path into Big Hill Park. Our ultimate goal is to connect the bike path, which right now ends in Afton, to, to the Beloit Trail system without going on to Afton Road. Now, that's a big project going through some private property, but the resolution in front of you is to support the bridge and the path through Big Hill Park. And then, as part of the big picture, South Beloit has entertained a bridge, a path over the, using the Wheeler Bridge, and that's, that's moving forward as well. So I just wanted to mention all those possibilities because this is a piece to the puzzle. Ultimately, it would connect Janesville to the Beloit Trail system, going into South Beloit, and then into Illinois. So with that, I'd like to thank you for giving me the time to voice my opinion, and hope you support resolution 11A. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have any other persons wishing to come forward and speak under citizens' participation? Please do. Approach the podium, state your name and address.
My name is Janet Poreno. I am district director for Congressman Mark Pocan. My address is 125 North Hamilton Street in Madison, Wisconsin. I want to thank all of you for giving me the opportunity to speak and for considering tonight on your agenda some space for Congressman Pocan to have here at City Hall so that we can meet with constituents. It's very important to him to have a presence and a local phone number here in Beloit, the second-largest city in his district, the second congressional district. I really want to state my appreciation for city administrator Larry Arv, for planning director Julie Christensen, and for city attorney Tom Casper, who have been so helpful in negotiating this lease and in putting it before you this evening. So from, from the congressman's perspective, he feels that this is of benefit to our mutual constituents so that they have an opportunity to talk to both their local and their federal officials in one building. And we also feel that it will help foster communication on issues that are of mutual benefit, again, to the residents of Beloit, both on a local and a federal basis. I do want to stress that this is for official duties only. It is against ethic, the House of Congressional Ethics and Federal Law, that we only do official duties in this location, in our office. It's against the law to do any politic, anything political during this time or in an official location. So again, thank you very much for considering this this evening. I'd be happy, when appropriate, to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Have any other persons coming forward to speak under item five, citizens' participation? Second call for persons to come forward and speak on item five. Third and final call for persons to come forward and speak. Hearing and seeing none, I'll close citizens' participation, and we'll move on to the consent agenda. All items listed on the consent agenda are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no items, separate item discussion on these items unless the council member still requests, in which event the item will be removed from the general order of business and considered at this point on the agenda. Do we have some, do you wish to remove something, Counselor DeForest?
Yes, Mr. President. I'd like to request that item 6D as a dog be removed, please.
Okay, thank you. So do I have any other counselors wishing to remove something from the consent agenda? Hearing none, the consent agenda will consist of items 6A through C and 6E. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Move approval.
Second. Moved by Levy, second by Vanda Bogart. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item, consent agenda passes five to zero, and now on to 6D.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to participate in the State of Wisconsin Energy Office new grant program forwarding Wisconsin's fuel choice.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is indeed a new program that the Wisconsin Energy Office is implementing. This first phase of the grant will be done in conjunction with the city of Beloit fleet staff, and will be the purpose of conducting what we would generally refer to as an energy audit of all of the city's fleet, assessing the vehicles, the fuels that are used, the uses for these respective vehicles, and looking at what alternative fuels or non-traditional fuels may be available to help run the motor vehicles for the purpose of reducing greenhouse gas emissions, creating lower costs, making this thing, the fleet, more efficient. As the council is aware, the city of Beloit has been an echo municipality for many years. I believe it was 2007. We have an extensive green program for which we are known around the state of Wisconsin and some sectors nationally. In fact, we just won a national award a few weeks ago for our recycling program. We would very much like the opportunity to work with the Energy Office and have been given some hope that should the assessment prove successful, there may indeed be future funding to actually help the city retrofit some of its fleet to use other, hopefully more efficient, and energy or fuels that would reduce the city's carbon footprint. So we're requesting the council authorize the grant application this evening.
Thank you. Do you have any questions or comments? Counselor DeForest.
Thank you. I'm excited that we'll be conducting the energy assessment of the fleet. I did have some specific questions. I'm sorry I didn't have the chance to email these in advance, because you don't like to stump ahead of time, but I was not able to do that. The two questions I have, in, in the agreement, it's referenced that the city must be willing to provide a small amount of in-kind cost share towards the program. I'm assuming that's employee time. Do we have a sense of the approximate number of employee hours we're expected to use on this?
It is, it is staff time, and that will be used to make the match, if you will, the in-kind grant. We do not anticipate needing any cash, do not have an exact count at this time as to how many man-hours will actually be used to complete the audit.
Okay. And then there's also reference to a small stipend from the state energy office. Will that help cover, defray some of those employee hours, or are you thinking that's for less direct?
We're not sure yet. This is a new program. Things are still being formulated. As you saw, we don't even have a grant amount in the application, which is very unusual. Normally, we have a specific amount that we've either been, been told to apply for or that we feel we need. In this case, we're not quite sure. So we'd like to get the application in. As I mentioned previously, should anything come up that creates any strings or any kind of a run-out liability or requirement on the city, we'll bring that back to council. Right now, we do not believe that is the case. It will be a straight-up energy audit or assessment, and once that's done, we'll bring that in, share it with council, before we move forward with any kind of an implementation program, whether it's grant-funded or not. And they may find some other alternative fuel use or some other mechanism or methodology that it works for us, for which there's not a grant, and we may want to go ahead and explore that on our own. But we'll bring that back to council when we get the audit complete.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Counselor Vanda Bogart.
Ultimately, are we talking the possibility of natural gas? Is that what this is?
That certainly is one of them. There are several fuel options. As you know, the city spent years looking at various fuel options. Compressed natural gas has been one of them. It is feasible, and particularly for things like our trash trucks, it would be very, very helpful. The problem is the cost, the cost of retrofitting the vehicles, putting in a filling station, et cetera, simply make it unfeasible economically to move forward. We're also still doing a lot of research, and we have several vehicles that we've converted to the electrolysis program, the hydrogen electrolysis program. We've had mixed results with that. We're still working with the university system to try and work through the technical problems that remain with regard to that particular fuel source. And then there's biodiesels, there's, there's, we do use for our bus fleet, I know, a form of a biodiesel that is, produces a lower carbon footprint, better quality fuel. And so there's other options like that. Epinol probably would not make much sense because the energy efficiency isn't there. But we'll take a look at all those options and see what makes sense. And as you know, the city's fleet is relatively large, and it's varied. So you've got trash trucks that run 15 feet and stop, start up again, run 20 feet and stop. You've got buses that are on the road all day, the police fleet, fire all the public works trucks and snow removal vehicles. So it'd be kind of interesting to see what they come up with.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, do we have any other questions or comments on item 6D? Hearing none, I'll call the matter. All in favor of approving 6D, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes five to zero. And we're on to item 7A.
A proposed ordinance to remove one-hour parking restrictions on Pleasant Street between East Grand Avenue and Public Avenue. The traffic review committee recommended approval, five to one.
Mr. Flash.
Thank you, Mr. President. This request was made by Brad McCaslin of Rivals Sports Bar and Grill at 443 East Grand Avenue to change the one-hour parking restrictions on Pleasant Street between Grand Avenue and it's not Pleasant, between Grand Avenue and Public.
Yeah.
Wow. Brain freeze there. Sorry, guys. Originally, the traffic review committee approved that request on its March meeting, and the committee voted four to one in favor of removing the parking limit. Originally, the request was to remove the one-hour parking and make it two hours, but after discussing with Mr. McCaslin, it was determined that his patrons may need more than two hours, and so we're now requesting for it to be unlimited. And that was the request that went before the traffic review. Again, the map that you have contained in your package shows it's on both sides of the street, and the Downtown Business Association coordinated the, the contacts of the local other businesses. So the staff recommends approval of the removal of the one-hour parking and making it unlimited.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to suspend the rules?
Second.
Moved by Levy, second by DeForest. Have any questions on suspending the rules? Hearing none, I'll call the matter. All in favor of suspending the rules, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We've suspended the rules by a vote of five to zero. Do we have a motion on the merits?
Approval.
Moved by Levy.
Second.
Second by Spritzer. Do you have any questions on it? Mr. Vice President.
Two questions. Do we know what the reasoning behind the one no vote was, and is there any concern about going all the way from two parking to unlimited in terms of people not related to those businesses staying there for a long time, or are you completely comfortable with that?
The no vote was the police department. I think they thought the spot, traffic limitations, parking limitations would make it difficult for them to enforce, and people understand where they can and can't park, or what time frames. So I believe that was their reasoning behind that. Do I feel comfortable with it? If this is what the people want to try downtown, as you know, that they live there, they have their people there, we're here to, I'm here to say, if that's what you want, I see no major issues with it. It's, it's doable. But again, if you notice, they come back on a regular basis requesting changes. I expect someone to come back as businesses change, making additional requests. That's what, that's what happens in the downtown.
Thank you.
Counselor DeForest.
I have a question related to that as well, so that hopefully we're not having to revisit this again in a couple months. It does say in our staff summary that the DBA made an effort to contact the adjacent business owners. Do we know how successful they were in actually speaking with the adjacent?
I don't know if they spoke with them. They do email blasts. They have all their members on the email. So they, they were all contacted via email, and we did not hear anything back.
Okay.
Either way, as far as I know.
I'm also wondering, once the Phoenix project goes in, and we have tenants, hopefully, living less than a block away, if they're going to take those spots, and then Rivals might not be too happy because their customers can't find a spot there at all.
Then we'll probably be back with more restrictions, but you have to remember that the on-street parking is only valid, they call it unlimited, but there's still no parking from 3:00 AM to 6:00 AM.
Okay.
Okay, so, so they'd have to get up and move their cars by 3:00 AM.
Okay.
Or be going to work by 3:00 AM if they're going to be there, you know? It's, it's the complexity.
So the signage will reflect that there's no parking there between 3:00 AM and 6:00 AM?
It is throughout the downtown, yes.
Okay.
And that will remain.
All right, thank you.
Any other counsel questions or comments? Hearing none? Oh, you've got one?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, there you go.
I didn't have one until Counselor DeForest kind of brought up the Phoenix project, and I'm thinking that if we do have tenants in there, they're probably going to have a garage or parking permits, that they would have a designated place to park. But we all know that even though they have designated places to park, they might park in the most available spot that they see. I guess my only concern here is if the police department is saying, you know, it's going to be hard to enforce. I understand that it is. I mean, I think it's a problem that I wish that we could just get a solution to it and say, this is the way it's going to be for the downtown parking, no matter who comes in or out, what business comes in or out, to say, this is what it is for the downtown parking. I know it's difficult to do, but you're going to have this spot zoning or spot parking permits, and it's going to be tough to enforce. I just wish that somewhere, long-range, we look and say, this is what we really feel that we can do downtown. I know it's a crazy thought, but...
Well, let me, Mr. President, let me address the two questions here. Number one is the Phoenix project. As you probably read in the paper, the college will not be a part of the Phoenix project. One of the positive aspects of that decision was that most of the parking concerns have also been alleviated. Instead of 63 college students and probably 40-plus cars, there will now be 25 apartments, which means somewhere probably 25 to 35 tenants. There will also be a row of garages added to the back of the property, so somewhere around eight or 10 of the cars will be off the street, be on their property. So you've got a much smaller parking problem related to the Phoenix project than we had a few weeks ago. Number two, as Mike indicated, you cannot park on the street. Council has created a special permit program for downtown residents that applies only to municipal parking lots and only in spaces that are designated within those lots as unlimited parking. So that's the only place residents can park. They cannot use this on-street parking. If they do, they will get a ticket during the early morning hours. Second part of your question was about a fixed system. Once again, you have to understand that these timed parking restrictions serve no public purpose. These are not done for public health, safety, or welfare. They're done to accommodate our local merchants, to make sure that there's customer parking available. And you are correct, they do change over time. We used to have the one-hour parking there, and the businesses wanted that. They didn't even want two hours, if you'll remember, when this went to one hour. And then we've had a business come in now that has a trade that comes in for the entire evening, and we're over there writing tickets while this guy is trying to build a patronage for his business. So we've got a direct conflict of interest between what we're doing and what he's trying to do. So he's come to us and said, look, I need to remove that. So now it's, it's going to be removed. I'm not sure what the enforcement issues are because there will be no time restriction. So there will be no enforcement problems, period. There simply isn't any. The only thing we do need is to make sure when we re-sign this... The only thing we do need is to make sure when we re-sign this, that we do have a number of signs sprinkled around downtown that cover the overnight parking, because there is that early morning parking ban, to be sure we can do snow removal in the winter and street cleaning and what have you during the summer. I'm not sure how many of those signs are left. It's been a number of years. We will make sure we add a number of those in critical locations when we re-sign this area. And I'm hoping to get the signs, if council acts on this tonight, to get the signs down tomorrow, so that we don't ticket their patrons, but certainly to have them down before the weekend, so we don't ticket their patrons.
Okay.
It's published. It's enforced when published. It becomes, by the resolution. So once we get it published, we can take the signs down.
Oh, okay.
Okay. So you've got to approve it, then we publish it, then the signs come down.
Okay, good. Any other questions?
But we're still talking about this weekend, though, right?
Ask Rebecca, she publishes.
No, it'll be published in the paper on, I believe, on Tuesday.
Okay.
Next week.
Okay, all right.
That I didn't know.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call the matter. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes 5-0. And item 7B.
A proposed ordinance to remove one-hour parking restrictions for several stalls along Grand Avenue between State Street and Third Street. The Traffic Review Committee recommended approval, 5 to 1.
Mr. Flash.
Thank you, Mr. President. This request was made by Andrew Yonke, our Economic Development Coordinator, Director, on behalf of the Fat Wallet to remove some one-hour parking time restrictions for a number of the stalls in front of the Fat Wallet facility there on West Grand and also on the Grand Avenue Bridge. The Traffic Committee, Review Committee reviewed this at its March meeting, and the committee voted 5-0 in favor of removing the one-hour parking time limit. The map in your packet indicates by color code which ones will be the unlimited. That will be the, the purple one, the purplish-blueish is the unrestricted. The greens remain the same as unchanged as one hour to facilitate access for their visitors into Fat Wallet and for the remaining businesses there on West Grand. Picture states a thousand words, doesn't it? It's awesome. The DBA, Downtown Business Association, has been contacting the locals, again, the local businesses, and they found support for the change. The staff recommendation is to approve this resolution as presented.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to suspend the rules?
Move to suspend the rules, Mr. President.
Moved by Spritzer, second by Levy. Does anybody have any questions on suspending the rules? Hearing none, I'll call the matter. All in favor of suspending the rules, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We've suspended the rules by a vote of 5 to 0.
Move approval on the merits, Mr. President.
Second.
Moved by Vanda Bogart, second by Levy. Do we have any questions on the merits?
I would like to make an observation, Mr. President.
Go right ahead.
Briefly. Certainly, it's a good problem to have in terms of numbers of people in our downtown. Secondly, it's somewhat of a incongruity that at a time when our medical profession is telling us that we all ought to walk more and do more physical activity, that we break our backs trying to accommodate all of the parking issues that are right next door to your place of business. I don't know that it's our role as a council to, to try and motivate individuals to walk a little bit, but it certainly seems to me that we all could benefit perhaps by walking a little more and complaining a little less.
Good. And was that, was that it, Jim?
That's it. Yeah, that's it.
Did we put away your sofa?
That's right. That's right.
And by the way, you're preaching to the choir, Lawrence.
I know, but...
We did Dick Mill and then walk.
I do.
Really?
I do. I, 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 very rarely. I always walk downtown.
Well, I'm so happy for you.
All righty. So any other questions or comments? All right, then. Hearing none, I'll call the matter. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We passed 5-0. All right, now on to item 8, appointments. We have some tonight.
I, the undersigned Charles A. Haines duly-elected president of the Beloit City Council, subject to the confirmation by the Beloit City Council, does hereby appoint the following citizen members to the vacancies in terms indicated below. Said appointments being pursuant to nominations made and approved by the Appointment Review Committee at the regular meeting held on April 8, 2013. Those appointments are for the Plan Commission, Thomas J. Nie, 810 and 1/2 Chapin Street, replacing Charles Ramsden for a term ending April 30, 2016, and to the Police and Fire Commission, incumbent Timmy Link, for a term ending April 30, 2018. Do we have a motion to approve the appointments?
I'm happy to make that motion.
Moved by DeForest.
Second.
Second by Spritzer. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Appointments are approved by a vote of 5 to 0. I'd like to also announce the following vacancies. To the Alcohol Beverage Licensing Control Committee, there are two vacancies for residents. The Appointment Review Committee has two vacancies for residents. The Board of Appeals has two vacancies for alternates for residents and one vacancy for resident. The Board of Ethics has one vacancy for a former city councillor and three vacancies for residents. Board of Review has one vacancy alternate for resident. The Business Improvement District has one vacancy for owner-occupant. The Community Development Authority has one vacancy for resident. The Equal Opportunity Human Relations Commission has one vacancy for residents. Municipal Golf Committee has one vacancy for youth representative. Parks and Recreation and Conservation Advisory Commission has one vacancy for youth. The Plan Commission has one vacancy for resident, and the Traffic Review Committee has one vacancy for resident. I would admonish all persons to, to consider, you know, being a part of one of these commissions. There's, I mean, we do rely on those commissions to review things before we look at them and give us recommendations from a community perspective. If you have an interest, I would advise that you contact the city clerk and get us an application. We'd just love to have you. Move on to item 9, Counselor, activities and upcoming events. We will start with Counselor DeForest.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to thank the Leadership Academy for spearheading the efforts to develop a bridge over Goose Creek and Big Hill Park, and want to make sure the public is aware that there will be a fundraiser at the Afton Pub this Saturday in the evening. I'm hoping to, to see you out there to help support this effort. And then on a personal note, I just wanted to express my appreciation for the support that's been shown to me and my family, as my 14-year-old son has recently been diagnosed with leukemia and is undergoing chemo, and wanted to please ask for constituents' patience as I will be maybe not quite as quickly responsive in returning emails and phone calls for the next few months as he's undergoing chemo, and certainly will continue to try to perform my duties as a city councillor as, as I'm able. And would just, again, like to thank all those who've expressed their support and prayers on behalf of my son. Thank you.
Counselor Vanda Bogart.
Thank you, Mr. President. Certainly, a number of us, all of us, were shocked by the horrible events in Boston this afternoon with the apparent bombings at the end of the Boston Marathon. It's a story that's unfolding as to who, or why, or what the motives were, but certainly a number of individuals, two, as I heard, were killed and 80-some injured, and our thoughts and prayers are with those victims of what certainly I think is senseless violence. On a happier note, Mr. President, I'd like to thank you and Vice President Spritzer. Last week on Thursday, if you recall, the Snappers had their opening day, and you'd been asked, as I understand it, to toss out the first pitch, and you were unable to do so, and Mr. Spritzer wasn't able to do so, and you asked me to fulfill that duty. I did so, along with my three-and-a-half, almost four-year-old grandson. We arrived at the ballpark to find it approximately 33 degrees and windy and rainy. And we were greeted by Mark Edwards and Brian Ramsey from the Parks Department and recycled teenager John Calcarats. And we all made our way ultimately to the pitcher's mound area, and my three-and-a-half-year-old grandson had an absolute ball. He was running around, "I threw out the first pitch!" And he did it twice, in fact. So thank you for that opportunity to let him get out there and throw out the first pitch, even though it was colder than a sunburn. So, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Spritzer.
Well, the reason that I was unable to throw out the first pitch is that I was attending the annual Duffy Colloquium at Beloit College, which is a celebration of wonderful community partnerships that take place with a number of college students and organizations all across the community. It was a wonderful event and a great chance to meet some of those students that are participating in those different partnerships and, and getting out and working with different organizations to benefit Beloit. Today, I also had a chance to attend the Earth Day Conference in Madison, put on by the Nelson Institute, and went to an interesting session on campus-city and county collaboration around issues of sustainability, brought back some interesting ideas, and it was also great to hear how we stack up favorably in quite a number of areas with some of the different groups that we're presenting on what they've been doing. So a good, both affirmation of what we've been doing and some ideas for things we can do more of.
Thank you. Counselor Levy.
Nothing.
Okay. And I have nothing today. So we'll move on to item 10, City Minister Participation. There's, presentation, there is none, so on to 11A.
A resolution authorizing the submission of a grant application to the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources to assist in funding the Goose Creek Bridge and Path Project in Big Hill Park.
Good afternoon, good evening. The City of Beloit is interested in developing land in Big Hill Park for a public outdoor recreation purposes, as described in the application to the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources. The plan includes a bridge across Goose Creek and a pedestrian bike path along the northwest corner of Big Hill Park. Engineering for the pedestrian path in Big Hill Park has not been completed. We do have a brief rendering that was kind of thrown together by engineering, which was in your packet, and that will be included in the grant funding request. The development is consistent with the Beloit-Jeansville Bicycle Route Corridor Plan and Feasibility Study that was created by Schreiber Anderson in February of 2012. The Parks Recreation and Conservation Advisory Commission discussed the bridge project at their March 13 meeting and voted unanimously to support the bridge. Since that time, Sheila, several of the staff members have toured Big Hill Park, and as of today, I think the lower level may be open, but at the time it wasn't. We had to have a key to unlock it. And I can assure you that the path that you see here follows the topography, and it's not the zigzag that we had mentioned at that meeting. And at some point, we can go out there when the snow is completely gone. Staff recommends approval of the DNR stewardship grant, which is a 50-50 match, which is quite a great match. Sometimes you see 80-20, but to see 50-50 is really great. The matching funds will be listed in the CIP. If I can put my other, my LDA hat on from the group that I'm working at for a moment. I want to assure you that the funding for the Goose Creek Bridge will be provided to the city by my Leadership Development Academy team. Our team has already started fundraising for the project, and we have, we've also gotten labor donated and volunteers that are willing to help us. It is also part of the matching fund, so the 50-50 isn't just monetary, it's also with other donations that we've received thus far, which include a crane and some volunteer time. And I have some interesting news that's just occurred within the last couple of days. We have a verbal commitment of a pretty substantial donation, so if this does come through the bridge, we're about halfway there or more, and so that's been really exciting. I can't really disclose much about that at this time, but I do want to also thank you for restoring career development money in our budget, which was, which has allowed me to participate in LDA this year, which has then brought a project back to the city. So I know my team knows where my allegiance lies, but by me being able to participate in LDA, I've been able to work, not only meet new people and make friends, but also to bring this project back to the City of Beloit, and thanks for the plug, Sheila, for our fundraiser on Saturday, April 20. There's also a hike on April 20, if you're interested.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve?
Beckett.
Moved by DeForest, second by Levy. Do we have any other questions or comments on this item?
Just to comment, Mr. President, I'd like to thank Ms. Jacobson for her work on the issue.
All right, thank you. And I would, I would also concur. Hearing no other questions or comments, I'll call the matter. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes 5-0. And on to 11B.
A resolution adopting the classification and compensation plan for non-represented city employees and authorizing implementation.
Mr. York.
Thank you, Mr. President. The resolution before you this evening is to approve a paying classification study that the city recently completed. I won't go into a lot of detail this evening. We did have a fairly comprehensive workshop with the city council last Tuesday evening. We had McGrath Consulting in here, and she did a pretty thorough job, I believe, of presenting to the council the study that she completed. And just to highlight some, some, some points, as you recall, last August, we came before the council seeking approval to hire McGrath to perform this study, and the basic reason for that was the city's current paying classification plan has been in place for some 15 years now. It's somewhat out of date, and we also had a situation that occurred last year with the passage of Wisconsin Act 10. Two of our ASME labor unions decided not to recertify, which brought in, pretty much doubled the, the number of non-represented employees that the city had at that time. So we had to find a way to bring that group of employees together with the non-represented employees that we, we had at the time, and that was part of the reason that we decided to hire McGrath to perform this study. This has been about a six-month process. We started on this last fall and basically just completed it within just a few weeks ago, working with McGrath. They have done a very thorough job, I believe, of putting the study together. They've met with all the employee groups, have had an opportunity to see the study and to comment on it, and we are presenting it to the council this evening for ratification. And I'm glad answering any questions you may have.
Thank you. Start with, go ahead and get a, a motion to approve.
Move approval.
Moved by Levy, second by Spritzer. Counselor DeForest.
Thank you. I, I saw in the report that most of the employee concerns centered around the implementation of the merit award, and I just wanted to check the recommendations that the consultant lays out of the pieces that she recommends are in place to, prior to implementation of the merit system. The three major categories that I was able to summarize or draw out from her report was the develop, new development of job descriptions, supervisory evaluation training to all who are required to complete evaluations, and then, thirdly, to provide evaluation training to all employees so they understand the process. And I just wanted to make sure that the commitment was there internally, that we would do those things prior to that implementation.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Counselor Vanda Bogart.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, I'd like to make a couple of observations and comments. First of all, this is certainly something that the city needs to do in terms of reviewing and, and, and bringing up-to-date its employment concepts. If it hasn't been done for 15 years, we needed to do it. Certainly, we needed to do it after the implementation of Act 10, where we had elimination of two of our five municipal unions. How you treat these people, employees, fairly is certainly always an issue that we have as an employer. As counselors, we have a bigger responsibility than that. We have the responsibility of how do we treat the taxpayers? And I understand from the estimates that have been prepared that there is no additional monies needed for 2013, about $66,000 for implementation of this in 2014. We certainly would have had some upward pressure regardless of whether we implement We certainly would have had some upward pressure regardless of whether we implement this plan or not. We would have had to pay a little bit more along the way. And I note that for some of our lesser-paid positions, we had trouble recruiting people to come to the city of Beloit and work. So, it's a balancing act at our level. It's not just give it all to the employees and stick it to the taxpayers, or vice versa, and we have to try and find our way here. Much has been said about how Act 10 gives us the tools to help us at the municipal level. Well, this is an example of where it doesn't give us any tools at all. It gives us expenses, and we have to try and find our way forward. And so, this is a balancing act. I'm certain that we'll have to revisit it. I'm certain we'll have to revisit it before another 15 years, and this is an attempt to balance the needs of the corporation, the needs of the employees, with the overarching needs of the taxpayers. Thank you.
Councillor Spritzer.
I would echo councillor Vanda Bogart's comments to the extent that I think this is a balanced plan, and I felt very comfortable during the workshop that a lot of thought had been given, and the consultant's recommendations seemed to be sound, and I'm glad that we've made the recommendation to go ahead and implement them. And I would also echo councillor DeForest's wanting to make sure, of course, that we fully implement the recommendations prior to the merit plan, and I trust that we will do that, so I'm comfortable adopting this.
Thank you. Well, I'll point out that, I mean, there's been some discussion and some mentions about our comparables on this, that we, you know, haven't looked at the private sector, but it's so difficult to measure between the private and public sectors, between benefits and various structures and various job descriptions. It is exceedingly difficult to do, and I also like to think that, you know, one of the purposes here is that we're trying to get the best employees possible and to treat them as fairly as possible. That's something I think this plan does. It doesn't represent any additional pressure in our cost structure in any meaningful fashion. It's basically essentially status quo, but it organizes things better, and I think it's the correct thing to do. So, that's all I had to say on this. Do we have any other questions or comments? Alright then, let's go ahead and call forth the matter. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes five-zero. And item 11C.
A resolution approving the lease of office space to Congressman Mark Pocan and authorizing the city manager's execution.
Thank you, Mr. President and councillors. Congressman Pocan approached myself and council president shortly after his election and raised the issue of a satellite office here in the city of Beloit. As you know, the congressman is basically from Madison, and his primary district office, of course, is in that community. And as mentioned earlier this evening, Beloit is the second-largest city in this congressional district, and the congressman does want to maintain a presence here. He asked us if there would be a room available that they could rent from the city to have an office here, and as you heard earlier, we very much agree with those comments. There's a lot of synergy in having the congressman's office in City Hall. Certainly makes it easy and convenient for residents who need to do government business to stop by City Hall when his office is occupied, and they will not be there 40 hours a week, but there will be regular office hours, and those will be announced in the media. We did have a room available on the city's third floor as a result of some office relocations that have been planned for some time. The space has about 117 square feet. The congressman will be paying $300 to the city per month for rent, plus $50 to cover the utilities and the Wi-Fi or computer access, and those are all provided. They're integral to the building, so it will be hard to segregate those out, and we felt the easiest way was to aggregate the utilities and the internet access with the basic rent payment, and that brought us up to $350 per month. There are some general terms and conditions included in the lease agreement. The city council negotiated that with the congressman's staff. We're very comfortable, as he indicated earlier, it's modeled a lot on the lease that we did with Fat Wallet, only, of course, this one's in the City Hall proper and is for a government use, not a private business use. With that, Mr. President, I think I'll conclude my introductory comments. If anyone has further questions, I'll be happy to entertain those.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve?
Move approval, Mr. President.
Move by Spritzer, second by Vanda Bogart, and councillor Vanda Bogart.
Thank you, Mr. President. By history, tradition, and statute, I believe, city government in this state is nonpartisan, and I want to make sure that the public understands, and Mr. Arf, as you would reaffirm, that this in no way, this lease agreement in no way removes from the city this nonpartisan label, or this does not constitute an endorsement of Congressman Pocan or his policies or his tenure. It's simply an opportunity to have a service office, no politicking for reelection, and we would offer the same deal to whomever might be our next congressperson.
That is correct, and as you heard earlier, congresspersons and senators are prohibited by law from using their district offices, which are tax-supported, and the staff that works in those offices, which are part of their congressional budget, they are prohibited by law from using those for partisan political or campaign purposes. So, there will be nothing political about this office. There will be a staff person here on an intermittent schedule, yet to be announced, who will be providing service to constituents, and also, an opportunity for us, we will have direct contact with the congressman's office as well, so we'll be able to interact with this individual. If we have issues or concerns with legislation upcoming in our nation's capital, we'll also have direct access to the congressman through this satellite office.
And if, by chance, in a new census eight or 10 years from now, and we're reorganized and we're back in the first congressional district, and we have Congressman Ryan again representing us, we'd have the same deal with him if he wanted.
Love to have him, whoever our future congresspersons might be, to maintain a satellite office here in the City Hall.
I just want to make sure that we're clear on that, and the public is clear on that, that this is not...
Thank you.
...an endorsement of any one partisan or another.
We are certainly not endorsing anyone for election, but we have traditionally maintained good working relationships with our congressional delegation, and that includes our two U.S. senators, one of whom now happens to be a Democrat, one of whom is a Republican, and we've done the same thing at the state level. We have two assembly persons representing the city of Beloit now in Madison, one's a Republican, one's a Democrat. The same thing on the senatorial side, and we maintain good working relations and good communications with all of them.
Thank you.
Councillor DeForest.
Thank you. My questions and comments were along the lines of my colleague, councillor Vanda Bogart. I'm concerned about community perception of partisanship as well, and I'm just wondering, city manager Arf, if you could speak to how common this is occurring in other communities or areas. I was a bit surprised by it, but if you could share information about how this is more common than maybe I was aware of.
Well, I don't know that it's a common practice around the country. I certainly have, I had no of other circumstances like this, and I know there were other examples that were relayed to the city attorney, where other congresspeople around the country are doing this, moving their satellite offices or their district offices into existing public buildings. And once again, this is a government use, so this is really no different than us bringing a county office into the City Hall or having a state office of some sort integrated into the City Hall operation as well. But I have personally seen this done before, and I've seen cities that actually had like a civic center as opposed to just a city hall, and they actually had many of the communities not-for-profits, plus a cluster of government offices, county offices and federal offices located within the City Hall complex. So, it's certainly not a unique relationship at all. And the congressman came to us, I think, I believe they were advised as well as part of the orientation process, to look first at locating their district and satellite offices in public facilities like this as opposed to putting them in storefront or retail-type locations.
Thank you.
Councillor Spritzer.
Thank you. I would suggest that, obviously, this is a great situation where we only have one congressperson, and so it works out well in the other instances that were mentioned. Perhaps we might just want to give thought in advance in case others were to be interested in the same thing. I would certainly entertain that as well, but for offices where we have two, just to make sure that we have equity if we were to ever go down that road. But I know that Congressman Pocan made a pledge to have a Beloit office before he was elected, so I think it's great that that pledge will be fulfilled. Certainly, that was something that Congresswoman Baldwin had here and has been important over the years to our ability to interact with our federal representatives and get things that we need represented in Washington, and hope that that will continue. I also wanted to echo the separation of campaigns and official offices. Having previously worked in politics, I can say from my experience there that there's a very strict wall between those two activities, and I know that to anyone who has doubts about that, I can assure you that there's nothing to worry about in that regard. I see this as a win-win for Beloit, for both constituents and the city and the congressman. It seems like a great way of bringing our officials together and improving representation all around, so I think it's a great solution.
Okay. Thank you. Alright, any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call the matter. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Item passes five-zero. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Move.
Second.
Move by Levy, second by DeForest. All in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you.